Good evening and welcome to the June 9th, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Tracy, everyone is in attendance. The Wilmington School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL-C30AS-21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel FY22 OIT salary range. The Wilmington School Committee will return to regular session following the executive session. Mrs. Newhouse? Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mr. Samaha?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Jen Brayson?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome back to the June 9th, 2021 School Committee Meeting. The School Committee is just returning from executive session, and you'll notice we have some very special guests with us tonight. We will soon be recognizing our retirees, but first, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our very first order of business is celebration and recognition of employee retirees. Dr. Brand.
Good evening, everyone, members of the School Committee, along with our retirees in attendance this evening, as well as our community members who are watching at home. Four hundred and twelve is the number this year. Four hundred and twelve years of combined service for those that have decided to part ways and move on to the next chapter of their lives. Four hundred and twelve years, and I would imagine collectively thousands and thousands of students within our Wilmington Public Schools that many of these retirees, the folks that are here this evening, as well as those that are unable to have been here tonight, have given to the community of Wilmington. On behalf of the School Committee, all of our other administrators, and all of our other staff who have not here, we thank them for their years of service, their time in service to our students and our families in Wilmington. It is somewhat, I think, bittersweet, probably fair to say, that this year of all years marks the last for those that have given so much to our community, and that's unfortunate. But at the same time, I am sure that those who have had the good fortune to have been in a classroom, or in a field, or in some other part of our building, who have been served by these folks, will take with them many fond memories ahead. So what we are planning to do this evening is we'll go through one by one in order, and if those that are in attendance would be so kind to come up, we have a couple of words that I'll read that were put together by those that know these individuals far better than I, and we have a plaque here. We wish that there was a monetary piece to go along with it, and that we can't do, but as a token of our appreciation. And so in the order that I have to read these tonight, Melissa Cahill, Melissa could come forward. Thirty-five years of service as a special education teacher at the Wilmington Middle School. Ms. Cahill has been within the Wilmington Public Schools since 1986, making her the longest-tenured retiree from the middle school this year. Ms. Cahill has worked at multiple schools in the district, but for the last two decades has called Room 141 home. Ms. Cahill's commitment to creating a positive learning environment for all of her students in the language-based program will be incredibly difficult to replace. Congratulations, Ms. Cahill. Next, Ms. Lillian Hopper.
Ms. Hopper is also from the middle school with 24 years of service, math teacher in the seventh grade. Ms. Hopper has been teaching math since 1997. She is well-known for her Molly Bucks, has worked at the middle school for the majority of her career, and has most recently been a member of the Grade Seven Discovery Team. We wish Ms. Hopper nothing but the best in her retirement.
Ms. Lynch has been with Wilmington for 13 years as an educational assistant, also at the Wilmington Middle School. She joined Wilmington Middle School staff as an educational assistant in the fall of 2008. She has worn many hats over the years, but most recently has worked as a vital member of the language-based program. Always going above and beyond, Mrs. Lynch will be remembered as a kind-hearted person willing to help out in any way that she can.
Mr. Stephen Lynch. Mr. Lynch has 23 years of service as a social studies teacher at Wilmington High School. Mr. Lynch will be finishing his last year in education this year after 29 years in education, 23 of which he's worked right here at WHS. He's been a dedicated teacher, coach, guidance counselor, and administrator to both of our students and staff, and we wish Mr. Lynch all the very best. Did I see Tom? Is Tom here? Tom McCray? Okay. Well, I'll say, I'll come back to Tom and share a few words about him in just a moment.
Oh, here he comes.
What an entrance, Mr. McCray.
All right. Your timing is perfect. Would you come on up? Mr. McCray, just arriving, has 25 years of service as a school psychologist at the Wooburn Street Elementary School. Mr. McCray has been with the district since 1996 in the role of school psychologist. He spent the recent years at the Wooburn Street School, but he's also worked at the Wildwood and has pitched in whenever and wherever needed over the years. Tom is known for his wonderful sense of humor, his vast collection of ties, and his ability to connect with and relate to each and every student. Tom has been a huge advocate for children and support for so many families over the years, and he has taken an active role school-wide through his involvement with such things as RTI, the PBIS team, and recently in all aspects of building-based COVID planning. It's hard to imagine Wooburn Street without him. We wish him many happy days in his retirement, spending time with his family and dogs, gardening and golfing, and maybe even revisiting his former career in the galley of a local whale watch. Congratulations. I'm going to turn this over for just a moment.
Jackie's been the Assistant Director of Administration and Finance for the past 10 years. Jackie always performs her responsibilities in a most professional and graceful manner. Everything she does, every decision she makes, is with the best interest of the staff and students of the Wilmington Public Schools. Jackie's a valued member of the Wilmington Public School team and has supported and put up with me for many years. Jackie's reasoning skills, empathy, and common sense are traits that will always stand out. We wish her all the best in her well-earned retirement.
Congratulations, Ms. Raffey. Up next, Mr. Neil Roberts. Mr. Roberts has 34 years in Wilmington as an art teacher. He's been a fixture at the Wilmington Art Department since his first year in 1987. He has worked at the Wilmington Middle School since it opened in 2001. For the last several years, Mr. Roberts has served as the Wilmington Visual Arts Liaison in the district, responsible for artwork all throughout the middle school, including murals and decorative fixtures, as well as organizing the yearbook. Mr. Roberts will be sorely missed by the middle school community. Mr. Dennis Shaw. For 16 years, Mr. Shaw has been the principal at the West Intermediate School. He's worked there since 2005, and he was an integral member of the district leadership team, and his ability to lead, make decisions, and steer his school in the most appropriate direction is a reflection of his passion for the West Intermediate School and its community. Dennis's staff and students were always his most important priority, and we most certainly wish him all the very best in his retirement. Mary has been here in Wilmington for 20 years as a math teacher at WHS. She's been an integral part of the WHS Math Department for the last 20 years. Her colleagues hold her with the highest regard and seek her input and counsel on many issues. Mary can always be counted on to make great suggestions and reflections in both department and faculty meetings. For many of the faculty, Mary is the voice of reason. She is known for her honest and humorous approach, and we wish Ms. Sullivan all the very best in retirement. Lastly, Cynthia. I know Cynthia's here.
For 26 years, Cynthia has served as the administrative assistant here at the Wilmington High School. Wherever Cindy goes and whatever she does, she makes it better. Not only is she a hard worker, but she has an ease of manner and a sense of humor that can brighten a room and make hard work a little more bearable. She will indeed be missed at WHS. We have a number of folks, unfortunately, that were unable to attend this evening, and so if you'll bear with me, I'd just like to take a moment and share a few words also about them as we congratulate them on bringing their career to a close. Eleanor Blake. Eleanor has had 17 years at the Wilmington High School as the TAP aide. Ellie is always so full of life. Her upbeat personality and jokes always made students and staff happy. That is what really makes the students trust and respect her support for them. She always made students happy to come to school. Karen Kitchen, 22 years, Food Services, also at the Wilmington High School, along with Wildwood Cares Group Leader. Karen has been with Food Services for 22 years, when she worked her entire career at WHS. She worked under four managers who relied on her for all aspects of food service. She also worked the Cares Program for many years and was a group leader there. Staff and children loved her. Karen, everyone will miss you. Patrice Lund, for 26 years, has been at Wilmington, Grade Five teacher at the North Intermediate School. Patrice has been a gregarious and valuable member of the North Intermediate School for many, many years. She's been an anchor on the fifth-grade team, preparing and sharing curriculum materials and lesson plans with her colleagues. She is by far one of the best storytellers to walk these halls. Patrice is also a lifelong learner. She has embraced the readers and writers workshop model and has traveled near and far to hear Lucy Colkin speak about teaching literacy skills to children. Patrice has a heart of gold, and we sincerely hope that she enjoys her well-deserved retirement. Sherri Parker, after four years of service as the Program Coordinator for Cares, is also retiring this year, at the end of this school year. She, during her time here, has continued to do whatever was needed to enhance the offerings of the Cares Program in our community. She's been an outstanding leader and a true professional who brought many changes and improvements to the program, including expanding the after-school programs for the middle school at School Hall, as well as the box program. That is it for our retirees this evening, and again, once again, on behalf of our community, thank you so very much for all of your service. We will miss you.
On behalf of the School Committee, we thank you for being here, and we are thankful for your dedication. I would love to get a picture, if possible, of everybody with Dr. Brand. I don't know how we can manage that, but I think it would be pretty cool, because I'm not sure you'll all be in the same space together again. So we're going to take a brief moment, community, so that we can capture this, and we'll be back in just a minute. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. We're going to hear the [inaudible]. Congratulations.
Much appreciated.
All right, guys, thank you so much for your service to our kids. Much appreciated. Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 Department at the West Intermediate School. She's also worked at Woburn Wilmington High as well as as the West, of course. She's also worked for the CARES program for many years and the children most certainly love her and in turn we will miss her. Congratulations goes to Mary Beth Smith after thirty-two-year career as a preschool teacher at the Boutwell School. She began her career going back to nineteen eighty-nine and has worked tirelessly for the children of Wilmington for the past thirty-two years. She will be missed by many and remembered as a teacher who always had a welcoming smile, a caring heart, and the ability to provide her students with the skills and strategies needed to become successful lifelong learners. Congratulations for after twenty-one years Karen Straziri, science teacher, grade seven Wilmington Middle School. Her retirement is a huge loss to the middle school community after serving as a science teacher in the grade-seven Explorer Team, but certainly an equal gain for her grandchildren. We're very excited to spend more time with her. Karen Sweeney, congratulations to her after twenty-two years within the Food Services Department at the West Intermediate School. She's also worked at the Wildwood Wilmington High School as well and has been a dedicated employee who's worked for the elderly program for many years. And finally, finally, sorry, after sixteen years as special education teacher at Wilmington High School, congratulations goes to Catherine Zitas. She's been dedicated to her students, always encouraged and pushed them to do their best and always her students have always counted on her to help advocate for them. Thank you again and congratulations for those members of Wilmington Public Schools retirees.
Excellent, thank you very much. Our next item of business is public comment. There are no in-person comments, although we do have two submitted written comments. Item five, approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes, May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. There are no new warrants to approve. That brings us to item six, superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you and again, good evening. There are a few items to provide the committee as well as the committee with an update on. First, we'll go in order. Social, emotional, learning, and family engagement specialists, as you know from the proposal that we shared with the school committee a number of months back now with Ms. Brown Legrande as well as Ms. Murray. Part of the district's efforts to shore up and provide expanded support for our students within the social, emotional realm and as well as our staff. We identified the addition of two staff members by name as is listed here this evening. I'm pleased to be able to share with the committee that that search has wrapped up and we had a very strong candidate pool and I'm anticipating being able to make that announcement within the next short, short period of time here, probably within the next couple of days. And this puts us on the path that we were hopeful for when we made this proposal originally and that was to have people in place to help as close to July first as possible, help move our district forward in terms of shoring up support for SEL and related programs and services. And so please watch for that announcement very shortly. Item six B, the SEEM Collaborative Coordinator of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. I've mentioned this fairly recently. This is part of after the school committee's support for this, our engagement with SEEM Collaborative and a number of other districts, a handful of other districts, as we co-share or co-op, I guess if you will, this joint program that will specifically be aimed at helping support district activity around equity, diversity, inclusion. As we speak, the search is actually ongoing right now and through all of the participating districts who are part of this endeavor have had representation at the table and that they have been throughout late last weekend into this week interviewing candidates. I understand that five candidates have been interviewed at this point and a handful are moving forward as part of a second interview. So I expect that at the point in which we meet next here, we will, we should have more news to share in terms of that search coming to a close. So that's exciting certainly and I'll keep you posted on those developments. Item six C is here this evening is really an announcement around the biannual review of the Wilmington Public Schools Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. You can see the acronym there, BPIP. There is some brief information within your folder and really the purpose of this being here tonight is an agenda item is to let the community know that we are preparing for opening up this window of feedback, if you will. It's something that out of necessity, public school districts in the state are obligated to do every three years and our plan is currently approximately two years old and so we are at that place in which we are preparing for that opportunity for feedback. Ms. Elliott, would you, would you add anything there?
So we are, we should be putting out an email to the community as well as posting it on our website for community feedback. So the edits that we made internally were just more related to specific programs we use and some minor updates. We are not making any recommendations for major changes at this point in time from our internal leadership team, however, we're opening up to the community for input as well. So we'll factor all input into final updates and then it'll be posted in July on our website once it's finalized.
Sure, Mrs. Burns.
I just had a quick question and perhaps we can revisit this after we've received feedback from the community, but a question I had was related to language under the assessing needs section of the plan and I wondered if, where it says that we collect data, we assess student, staff, family, et cetera perceptions on school climate. And I'm just curious when the last time our district has collected data on that and if we could find that information out.
Sure, I'm sure we can probably check with principals and Christine Murray who may have, I think she led this development of this work back when we did this in twenty-eighteen, nineteen. I can follow up with her to find that out.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Burns.
Can I just ask, was, or was or is the Behavioral Task Force a part of this piece? Or kind of was it, I mean, I know this was established, I remember when it, you know, when it was, but I didn't know if, if A, the Behavioral Task Force weighed in on that too. I guess we could, they could give feedback as a community, so that's, there's no barrier. But I just didn't know they were operating during the pandemic and if, if they had weighed in and if they'd be weighing in on any other future. Not to say that I don't misunderstand why it was, but this is coming forth to us as it's noted that it needs to, but I just didn't know if that task committee met and was part of the process at some capacity and if they will be re, I guess reorganizing in the fall to kind of take on a new active role considering, I forgive me, that might not be appropriate. So.
Chris, do you want to add?
The, I don't believe that the task force was involved in this. The edits that were made right now have been pretty superficial around adding our mission and vision statement, things like that. So we weren't looking at it for the full content at this point. I would anticipate that when the community feedback comes in, we will also make sure we're gathering the input from the folks in that group. So I will follow Christine Murray's lead on that where she facilitated that process. But we certainly, before we make any major changes, would certainly reconvene that group or some subset of that group to be able to look at that information.
Very good, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, excuse me, two more items under the superintendent's report. Item D, DESI Updates for Fall School Reopening. I thought it would be just important to include the most recent information from the Department of Education as it relates to the operation of schools, something that was released fairly recently, the end of May, May twenty-seventh, in fact. And in short, you'll see along with that item is a cover memo in which I tried to just highlight specifically the, I think the most salient points and those are that in terms of our operations throughout the twenty-twenty-one school year, the balance of this school year until the end, there is an obligation per the Department of Education that health and safety mitigation strategies that have been in place will continue through until the end of the school year. I do understand and completely hear that there are those that may believe that with the state of affairs at the state level right now, in terms of the repeal for the respective orders, that schools should, should fall into that. We find ourselves though in a, in a different place and public schools within the Commonwealth are obligated to follow these mitigation strategies. And so we have a little bit more time here clearly until the twenty-first, the end of the school year in which to do that. Summer school is also, and other related programs is also called out, you'll note in the guidance, the encouragement by the Department of Education, the encouragement is that districts and schools continue to follow the current mitigation strategies that are in place. I think there's a distinction there in terms of perhaps wider latitude and at the present time in which we, you know, I put this together right now, it would be the intention of the district to continue to follow those strategies, but that is something that's certainly in conversation with Ms. Crowe as well as Ms. Newhouse, Board of Health, would be something that we will perhaps revisit and take a closer look at as we go forward. We are operating an awful lot of programs, as I think many are aware, throughout the course of the summer. Certainly, many will be within the comfort of some window air-conditioned space or here at the high school, fully air-conditioned space, but that doesn't hold true at all locations. And so it is something that I know I'm keenly aware of, as I'm sure many are with the heat wave that we've had the last few days. And finally, under this DESI guidance, Fall twenty-twenty-one School Reopening, I've mentioned this, I think, on a few different occasions, but just again, just to highlight the information that's coming forth from DESI. We are planning and at this point in time have no reason to believe anything is different for, for full in-person, five days a week, full-time learning next school year. And it's our expectation right now that all DESI health and safety requirements will be lifted, including all physical distancing requirements. So that is the place in which our school principals have begun and they're well on their way of planning for sections and classrooms according to planned enrollment and so on. But I thought it would be important to highlight those things. I'll pause there if there are any questions and welcome.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Burns.
I just, I want to encourage us, I think, to have a conversation with Doreen and with Ms. Newhouse because DESI, as you state, encourages us to continue the current restrictions and mitigation practices, but they also note that the state of emergency will end on June fifteenth. And as you also referenced, I think the last three days of this heat wave have given us a little sampling of what it's like for children in these classrooms, in these masks. And I just think about other health-related concerns like heat exhaustion and I think it's very difficult for kids to learn when they're, you know, just trying to manage these physiological challenges that they're experiencing. So I'm just, I'm just going to advocate that we continue to have a conversation about that and that we think about the summer programming. That's my perspective and I would love to continue that dialogue.
Mrs. Burns.
I may not be correct on this, but I think what drives that is the CDC. That's their guidelines, knowing that hospitals are also sharing that June fifteenth deadline. And well, granted, we're not in the same conditions, but I think your points are varying absolutely valid and well-taken and I think, I know I share those concerns, but I also know that a lot of this is driven by the CDC and the state of things with that June fifteenth deadline. So I think that's what I suspect is where that is driven within public education buildings throughout the Commonwealth, so. But I think, you know, but I think there, you know, Commissioner O'Reilly, I read something and I don't remember if it's on the MSC Daily News that I get every morning, but I think he, in conjunction with the state CDC, is, you know, their fellow making that and I think Governor Baker is also approaching those steps towards lesser restrictions and other inside public areas. I may be wrong, so please don't quote me, I don't mean to misslie anything, but anyway, I hope that might, you may already be aware, so forgive me if I didn't ask you so.
Mrs. Newhouse.
Along those lines and maybe some clarification, and I'm not sure where I heard this, but it was my understanding that DESI was lifting all safety, health and safety requirements, but masks were still going to be, need to be worn in, last I saw was that grade six through twelve didn't need masks, but grades K through five was to be determined.
For next school year.
For next school year.
That is not something that I recall seeing and it's possible that something has been out there. What I recall seeing is reference to the fact that there'll still be consultation with the Department of Public Health around possibly some, still some safety measures in place, but I, I could be wrong, I don't think I've seen that, but I welcome my colleagues to jump in there if that.
I feel like I read that too somewhere, Joe. It was confusing to me.
It was confusing.
Because I read that everything was going to sort of be lifted in the fall, but then I do remember reading something like that and it made me pause for a second. So I, I think it's, I'm confused.
It certainly, on the larger level, one of the things that I would certainly propose and would be more than willing to do is when we have one more meeting scheduled clearly before summer recess here. And as it relates specifically to the summer approach, but also trying to get a closer handle on what you're just raising here, I will have follow-up conversations with both Ms. Crowe and Ms. Newhouse to try and get a sense of it. You know, with, with everything being in place, quite frankly, that has been through, taking us through until the end of the year, with all of the other noise out there around CDC guidelines and so on, there's been, I'm sure, things that have been released that I or we could have, could have missed, but we, you know, we'll, we'll certainly gather that information and report back.
Mr. Exter.
I'm also not aware of any official statement from, from DESI beyond what you've, beyond what you've indicated, that the restrictions will be lifted, but then they go back to say, just like, however, we'll be thinking if we need any more. It basically means the current restrictions are going to be lifted and stay tuned if anything else will be, will be forthcoming. And since we expect that undoubtedly not all elementary students will be vaccinated by the start of school next year, so that I think they're just going to put out the possibility of that there might be, you know, K through five, there might still be mask wearing required.
And if I may, on that point, I was going to mention it, I didn't mention in the memo, but I know that some are asking about vaccinations and where that falls and I must say again, similar to the other, there's not been anything that I have seen in any way definitive around expectations for vaccinations. So, you know, I, I know what you know, or you might be hearing out there. Finally, Panorama's Social and Emotional Survey Update. There is some information from, from Ms. Murray in your packet and this is part also of the very deliberate effort that we are trying to do in terms of attending to social and emotional well-being. You'll recall that's also being mentioned in addition to the two positions that I spoke about a few moments ago, the family engagement specialists. Panorama is also the, the application, the assessment suite, if you will, that is specifically aimed at gathering social, emotional understanding, learning, understanding, skills, et cetera, that are outlined here in this memo. We have gone ahead and purchased that, that suite, the technological suite, the application suite, and surveys are starting to happen right now. That was part of our plan in terms of trying to capture information that we could from students before they left for summer recess, bringing onboard these, these specialists and allowing them to take, to take stock of this data over the course of the next couple of months and help inform and frame specific areas that we can try and target to support our students when they return in the fall. So I'm very pleased to be able to say and very much to the leadership and the direction of Ms. Murray as well as Ms. Brown Legrande, that we are on course for what our plan was and I think we'll be in a very good place come the return of school in the fall to really be able to put into place some strong supports for our students. So this is just informational, but certainly much more to come, including obviously the survey results and so on as we, as we move forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns.
I think this is great and I just have a quick question. It's related to SEL but not about Panorama, so if I can come back, but I was curious as you're sort of talking about this whole package of SEL that's being prioritized for next year, I know that our working with William James Interface was also a part of that, which I'm very excited for the district about. I was curious though, is that something that the community can access currently or do, when does that begin?
Unless there's been an adjustment, and I don't think that's the case, that begins in January, I believe. And, and the reason for that is that the, the organization, if you will, William James Interface, they only allow so many communities or districts, if you will, in at a time. And so we, we got ourselves on the list as quickly as we could, but I think the spots were filled, so to speak, until unfortunately, January, I believe it is, isn't that right, Christine? I think January of twenty-twenty-two. So as that time draws near, and also this is a partnership that we're engaging with, with the town of Wilmington too, I, I have to believe that there'll be an awful lot of effort to really socialize and publicize what that service is all about, how people can access it and so on. So stay tuned, but unfortunately, there's a little gap of time.
Sure, it makes sense, I understand why, so.
Mr. Samaha.
Yeah, I'm curious if there are going to be, on that survey, if there are pandemic-related questions, like how has the pandemic, you know, impacted you? Is it, is it tailored like that at all or is it, it's more?
It's more broad because it's norm-based and it's using the national pool of data that they collect. So the questions they, are given a standard set of questions that we can choose to customize the survey. So those are, you know, within each of the different competencies. And then we have the ability to add some additional questions. Part of our goal right now is to keep the survey short enough so that it wasn't overwhelming to administer for this first round, but we did ask, we did add some additional questions related to students' sense of belonging and, you know, feeling like they're included in school. So we added a couple additional questions around that. But as a district moving forward, we can collect the standard, we can measure the standard questions, but we can also customize our own going forward. We won't have the, the base to compare that to, but we can look at our, if we ask a particular question from year to year, we can look at any trends for, with our own, within our own students.
Okay, because that's the time where I was going, that hopefully going forward, we can continue to use that and compare data between years rather than having this one-off sort of, sort of thing. I guess another question that I have sort of related to that, and you did touch upon it, I believe, was, was the length of, of the testing. It's the, in the memo, it said about ten to fifteen minutes for administration of it. I, you know, I, I am a little bit concerned about some of the reliability of the students with the reporting, considering if they're, you know, you've got this heat wave and it's like the end of school and, you know, how, you know, how accurate are they going to be in, in reporting? So I just, I have, I don't know if there really needs to be an answer to that, I'm just, I just want to sort of voice my concerns about, you know, the ten to fifteen minutes and if that's really true. I know for myself, when I've given lots of different, like academic assessments, that will tell you, it takes students, you know, twenty minutes to do it and there I am, you know, an hour later, the kid's still plugging away at it, you know, so.
It's not, it's not long, definitely, and we deliberately structured it in that way, but I will tell you that as with any survey, you're going to get some variation in how that's done. But what's nice about the, this particular tool is that you can repeat it multiple times. So we could offer it if we wanted, three times next year or more. So, you know, we'll be able to really kind of weed out some of the outlier results, if you will, over time in knowing that it's going to be, we can offer it more than once.
Oh, great, thank you.
Mrs. Burns.
So it's going to be done every, every year?
We, yes, we are hoping to be able to continue to have this license and do this as an annual data collection.
Will you, will you factor in that those year youth risk behavior survey into some of these areas as well to kind of help get trends within our student body and/or student cohorts?
Sure, and I think the benefit too of this is that we can administer it to our younger students as well.
Very good, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Exter.
So the, the memo indicates that students in grade four and above are going to be actually completing the survey and for below that, the teachers are giving their perceptions of the student, student lines. I'm a little curious about that line being drawn there because I feel that in most cases where we say, well, something can't, isn't quite appropriate to get all the way down to the full, the full range of the district, that they tend to do a cutoff more in grade one or two. And I was curious if there's a specific reason to not include grade three in the, taking the survey and self-reporting.
So that, we've had quite a bit of conversation around that in the last week or so. The program recommends K to two is done by teachers. They do say that grade three students can take it online. We had conversations with the consultant about that because it's a little bit more involved for third graders to learn how to do it and from my own personal experience using the survey tool before, we found that the reading component had an impact on our third-grade students and after administering it, teachers felt like I should have read it aloud to my class. And so given the time of year and everything else going on right now, we asked if it would be appropriate if we used it as the perception survey for grade three for this first administration. And they said that that would be totally fine for this launch for us. Also, given the structure of our schools, literally the, you know, grade spans that we have, to be able to have the Woburn Street and Shawshin follow the same format for administration, this first round, we thought made sense. So we will reconsider moving forward whether that, you know, once we get into a school year and have students have more experience with that, we'll consider having them do the digital version.
Mrs. Burns.
Just as a follow-up to that, if you don't mind, can I ask for more so directed towards the pre-through K, I guess more so through the pre-K to three, three, is there a component where parents can pose these questions to their children and have it within a, you know, a small timeframe to get them back in? Because a lot of times things are discussed at home and whether or not, you know, it may appear in one perspective. I mean, I haven't looked at the question, so I really don't know and I didn't know what the, the, you know, the, what is the percentage of, you know, what one may see in school may not be exact, you know what I mean, especially when you, if it's a self-reporting type of methodology, you know, I know I, my kids would re-engage and they'd say, well, I play with so-and-so, but I don't know if, you know what I mean, however, you know, granted you're bringing in other perspectives into it, but I just, I didn't know, you may have a better idea of the question.
I don't believe, I don't know of, there could very well be a parent component. I'm not familiar with that, so I know this right now is not designed for families to administer. We can certainly look in to see if there's additional options for families.
I just thought with that age bracket, it might be a more balanced data outcome. So thank you so much for considering it.
Sure.
Good, good, we can move on to old business, revisiting a strategic plan and next steps. Dr. Brand.
Sure, thanks. Very briefly, there is, you'll see a memo in the packet this evening regarding the strategic plan. As members of the committee know, we worked hard as a community to put together a three-year strategic plan last year for which was year one. Obviously, we didn't get very far, given the, given the obvious implications of the pandemic and placing really for the most part, the work and the initiatives respectively in the strategic plan on hold. I'm really here tonight just to share with you the fact that as we are looking ahead to the near future, the pandemic hopefully being far in the rearview mirror and trying to return to a sense of normalcy, it's also my commitment to return to the strategic plan and our efforts to really coalesce around a plan that helps drive our actions and the work that is the utmost priority. So just to share briefly that over the next number of months, we, obviously the leadership team has a, has an awful lot of still, work still to attend to, the many things that I know this committee knows very well and getting us grounded and ready to really formally restart next year. But part of that work will also be to circle back to the strategic plan, take stock of what we had in there as initiatives, incorporate into there quite possibly additional things that we seem to recognize on, in the landscape or over the landscape that may be. or, uh, over the landscape that may be important to consider, um, as, uh, we make our way out of the COVID-19 situation. And then bring that plan with respective, or, uh, recommended revisions, I'm sorry, back to you in the fall. The strategic plan is ultimately, um, a plan that the school committee approves. You did that. You took that step with our current plan. And so to that end, it would be my intention to bring that plan with revisions that include not only timelines, but also possible priorities, um, back for further discussion in the, in the fall. And I really just wanted to share that with you, that, that's, that's my intention. I think that's what's most important and, uh, we'll, we'll restart those conversations in, in the near future. Unless there are questions on that, that's, um, that's it for me this evening.
Mrs. Plummer?
It's actually not a question, but I, I don't know. I think you're discrediting some of the things that you've been working on, Dr. Brand, and, and the committee has been discussing of, of late that I think align with our strategic plan, like our, um, commitment to equity and inclusion and our focus on SEL. So I just want the community to understand that that ball was not dropped, but I think it just hasn't been in the spotlight. And I do think that there are things that have been in motion and actually working towards that.
Thank you for the comment.
Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, just, mine is not necessarily a question either, but just sort of, you know, a comment. I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, this return to normal sort of thing. And, and, and I get a little bit concerned about that, um, you know. And I, and I think there's a lot of stuff, I think, that have been exposed by the, by the pandemic, including some of the social-emotional stuff, which I know was put into motion before. But, but I, I'm just gonna say that I really appreciate this sort of approach to taking a look at this, uh, plan in, in light of everything, you know, that, that's, that's happened. So I don't think, I don't think about it in terms of any ball being dropped, but sort of having our experience sort of inform what's moving next. So I really, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, Dr. Rand's, um, taking a look at this and sort of, you know, using this pandemic as sort of like a learning experience to inform what's gonna happen, um, next. So, you know, I guess I'm just, I'm looking forward to, to the update on the strategic plan, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? That brings us to new business, item A, summer reading program. Mrs. Elliott?
Thank you. Um, so in your packet this evening, there's information about the summer reading program at both the elementary and secondary levels. First, I'd like to, um, thank Holly Banishevitz, our elementary literacy coordinator, for putting together these resources for our elementary students. And Mia Parveyan, Parveyanen, the English curriculum team leader, for her efforts organizing this program for, uh, the secondary students in grades six through 12. So at the elementary level, um, students are encouraged to participate in, um, the annual event that is, uh, the summer reading program that is offered by the Wilmington Public Library. And, um, Ms. Banishevitz, um, partners with the librarian there to make sure that, um, reading, student reading level materials are identified by level. So families will be able to, um, have appropriate book selections for their students. So there are suggested reading lists, um, that will be sent home at the end of the school year by teachers and with those suggestions, specific suggestions for students. Also, there is a summer, in, in addition to the, the Wilmington Public Library's, um, offering, there are some activities and games that, um, Holly Banishevitz has put together. Summer reading bingo, where students can participate in various engaging literacy activities and to blackout the bingo board. Family literacy nights and activities. There are, um, suggestions for engaging family fun activity nights with a literacy twist. So things such as Minute to Win It, Would You Rather, um, and something called Sweet Treats Scavenger Hunt. So these are some great ideas for families to spend time together and focus on literacy skills as well. For our current fifth graders, um, they will be receiving a specific letter with information about, um, the recommended summer school reading assignment. But we also hope that our fifth graders will take advantage of some of these fun, um, elementary levels, uh, activities as well. At the secondary level, um, middle school students entering grades six through eight are encouraged to read one of the books listed for their grade, one or as many as they can, um, but at least one. And they also hope that students will just, um, consider discovering, you know, other great reading choices all summer. Each grade includes note-taking guides, um, and reading guides to support thoughtful reading. And, uh, most of the books on the list can be found at the library as well. And at the high school, students entering grades nine through 12 are required to complete a summer reading assignment. Most titles are available to borrow at the Wilmington Library again. And, um, the students will be asked to, um, read one of the titles, talk about it with friends or family, and complete a dialectical journal. The themes this year for grade nine are Journeys and Change, grade 10, Coming of Age, grade 11, American Literature and Identity, and grade 12, Perseverance and Courage. And students will be, in grades nine through 12, will be expected to turn in their journal and demonstrate understanding of that, um, novel that they select at the beginning of the school year. So that is the overview. And within the document I shared, there are links to a lot of the activities and lists that I've mentioned, so.
Thank you. Let me just ask a quick, um, where are the lists for the middle and high school?
If you click on the, um, secondary link above middle school, that header, that will take you to all of the program within, it's embedded within each right now.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Smaha?
Just a quick, if, if, uh, if families are looking for this list, where would they find it?
So it will be sent, sent out and to, by teachers. But also, um, I know that it's going into, um, I've seen the email chain. It's going into all of the Google classrooms for students to access. But it's also, um, I believe it'll be posted on our website and, um, and it'll be sent, and principals are also including it in newsletters.
Okay. Fantastic.
Mrs. Plummer?
So, middle school summer reading is being recommended, but not required. Can you tell us why that, tell us a little bit about that decision?
Sure. Um, I spoke with Mia, um, this afternoon, a little bit about that because, you know, I, I knew that there was a, um, a lot of conversation and discussion that went into that decision. And the, um, the middle school team of teachers had quite a lengthy discussion around the summer reading program. And given the situation this year, um, they decided that they felt it would be in the best interest of the majority of students to make it optional and not mandatory. Lots of conversations around wanting students to love reading and not feel as if it was a chore. So trying to balance the demands that everybody has felt this year, um, SEL and, um, you know, all of that, with the academic pressure, they felt that this year it made sense to make it optional. And then again, they will continue to revisit that, you know, it was a, a, a decision for this coming year only and that they'll look at it again moving forward.
It's interesting, you know, I think every year they, we, families may rely a little bit on that requirement piece. But I think if, if the teachers could sort of say, if you could just read every day for 30 minutes, don't worry so much about what particular book it is, but if you could just read it, like I would choose to have my child read every day for 30 minutes into the last week in August. Oh, gotta read that book, like, it's kinda like, you have to, I mean, some children will read every book on this list and some children will wait to the last minute. And had we just said, it does, just read whatever you want, but read for 30 minutes a day. Like, I think it's, it depends on sort of the kid and how they approach reading. So I think that it probably makes good sense to, to rethink it, certainly for now, but also moving forward. Like, what are we, when they have to do a journal and I could have my child just read for enjoyment, what would I choose? I would choose to have my kids sit down and snuggle up with a book and read for enjoyment. So it's always that balance, but if you don't require it, will they do that, right? So there's this, how do you make that work? And I think it's just sort of talking to families about having a regular time where maybe it's on every day, but maybe it's every other day, or when it's really hot, right? We're gonna come in and we're all gonna read together as a family. So I think, I think it's an interesting discussion, um, as we, as we move into the summer because we certainly want to express how important it is for kids to be reading, really, I mean, if you think 30 to 45 minutes, at least five days a week, I mean, would be sort of the standard. So I think that it's a good choice that they made, um, for this particular summer.
I think there's always competing philosophies, if you will, around what makes the most sense. So, um, and I think any one plan isn't going to necessarily meet the needs of every family. So I, I, I agree that, you know, for me, coming into this district, I wasn't aware of what the routine normally is. So, you know, um, and of course, nothing about this year has been routine, so. So it is definitely something that, you know, we can continue to look at moving forward. But I, I do feel, you know, in my conversation with Mia, I knew when I asked her that it wasn't an impulsive decision by any means, that she is so extremely thoughtful about all of this and made sure she got stakeholder input from all the teachers and, um, from, you know, everybody on the team. So, um, but we certainly can revisit that as things start to become a little bit more normal moving forward and think about what makes sense for next year.
Thank you. Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I just, I think I, I wanna acknowledge, um, the work that goes into preparing this whole summer reading thing. This is, um, some great work. I, I'm particularly impressed with the, with the breadth of stuff at the elementary level, um, in terms of the reading games. I really, I really appreciate the collaboration between, um, the library and the schools. I think that's hugely important. And, and I think, you know, for families, if all of this, if any, you know, this is a lot of work, but if this doesn't seem to be fitting for your kid, you can always have, you can always talk to the librarians. I mean, librarians are amazing, amazing people with huge amounts of knowledge, um, you know. So just figure out what is the right reading program for your kid. I think, too, if there's families that are concerned about, you know, uh, you know, learning loss or, or, or what have you, that any of this stuff, um, is, is, is a perfect way to sort of get your kids involved in, in reading. One of the things that, that also sort of came up, too, as I was going through the, the list, I think that anytime I'm looking at a, a list of, of books, I also wanna be looking at it in terms of, um, diversity, inclusion, uh, you know, sort of widespread, um, you know, making sure that, um, the, when you have a list of books that says you need to read one of these books, that there's gonna be books that are gonna appeal to a lot of different kids, um, you know, and represent a lot of different, um, you know, parts of our, of our, of our community, of our society. So I think it's always important to really think about, you know, there's a lot of like really rich, complex, engaging texts that, um, you know, I think that are really, really, uh, important. And, you know, when I, when I look at those lists, I, I think I would, while I appreciate the list, sometimes I, I look at it and I think I would, like, give it a little bit more diversity, uh, in some of those books, especially at the, um, older levels. But, uh, you know, I think, I think we should always just be focused on that. But I think in general, I think this is a fantastic, um, hope, reading, summer reading programs. I just wanna, again, reiterate my appreciation for that.
I have another, um, kind of a follow-up to that. I think last year, there was some discussion, I think we'd asked something similar last year. Well, there is some diverse texts here, um, certainly at the grade six, seven, and eight level. One of the questions we asked was about accessibility. And I think last year, they had talked about everything chosen had, was actually accessible online in some way that they could get it for free. Is that the same thing with this list? Or are children expected, which is fine now, obviously, in the past, so before, before the pandemic, you could go in and they had just a tremendous amount of books, right, at e, of each title. And then last year, you could access it through the computer, through one of their sites, if you chose to. And I think that was an, that was something that they worked on last year. Many of these books look the same to me, so I'm wondering if there's, they're still accessible through your, through your NOOK or something.
That's a good question. I'm not sure of that, but I can find out. I don't know, I don't think I saw a reference to that or a, a mention of that, so I can find that out.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see it either, but I'm just curious. Thank you. And then my last comment, um, is, I, I'm just interested in, I'm happy to see the many, many, many resources for the elementary level. My instinct, when I first saw them all leveled, was like, ooh. It's like, oh, you know, cause not all children wanna read at, they might be more inspired to read at a different level. And so we know that there's so much research that says that, yes, that that, that does work for, but there also may be a book that they can access independently, but will be a great read aloud, right? And so I'm just, just cautioning families to not get too attached to the list that the teacher says, this is your child's level. So it's like kind of presenting a book, a basket, and saying, you can only choose from this basket when there's this big, beautiful library for them to choose from. So if they're gonna choose and it's a little bit too difficult, that's okay, too. This is just sort of a resource for families. So I sort of have a, like an excited reaction and then also like, ooh, let's be careful reaction. And I just wondered, um, kind of, this is different than what we've had in the past, and I was just curious.
So I do believe also there is, um, also the book award titles are suggested as well. So not just the leveled text, but, um, you know, other award-winning books are, are options there, too. This only goes through Level T anyway, so, um, beyond that, you know, it would be, um, students choosing from any of the, uh, lo, um, the award-winning books that they're recommending. But no, I certainly agree that a balance between that approach makes sense. You know, I think one of the questions we hear from families all the time is, help me find the just write books for my children so that they're feeling successful and independent and not frustrated and overwhelmed. So finding the balance between being able to pull out some, and these are available right at the library, books that are, they're going to be able to, uh, independently enjoy over the summer and not feel as if it's a, a task and then wanna put it away. But also balancing that with high interest, uh, you know, topics that they're interested in. And, and for some children, maybe they're picking those books and they're being read to, those, those books are being read to them as well. So, or, you know, a shared reading experience with a, an adult or a sibling, you know, if it's a little bit higher level for them. But absolutely a, a good mix of things that are independent level and things that, um, are just really interesting to them and motivating.
Thank you so much. Other questions or comments? Item 8B, we have FY '21 COVID-related grants. Mr. Righiro?
Hi, yeah, in your packet, you have, uh, a memo, um, talking about the ESER grants that the district received, ESER one, two, and three. Before we go into that, just informationally, the district also received some other COVID-related grants. Received a technology matching grant, a little over $39,000 that we essentially use for our Chromebooks and so forth. That's an FY '21 grant. Uh, we also received a grant, um, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, a little over $723,000. Again, an FY '21 grant, and the majority, I mean, well, all of that will be spent on PPE, yeah, purifiers, filters and so forth. And we received a state coronavirus prevention. It really wasn't a grant, it was just, uh, about $108,000 that all districts received, some amount of money. Again, COVID-related FY '21 spending requirement, and again, that went to all PPE, uh, personal protective equipment. So those are three other grants. And then if we wanna talk about the ESER one, two, and three, um, that's what the, the memo kind of outlined. So, um, back in, let's see, March of 2020, ESER one funds were made available to school districts. And for us, we received approximately a little over $100,000 in ESER one. And then in, toward December of 2020, ESER two became available to districts. And the amount that was allocated to Wilmington was $370,000, a little over $370,000, of which, uh, at least $10,000 has to be used for socio-emotional learning or socio-emotional, uh, purposes. And more recently, there's an ESER three grant. The district was allocated a little over $809,000. And at least 20% of that is, uh, related to learning loss. So as of right now, and the ESER one goes through the end of FY '22, ESER two through the end of FY '23, and ESER three through the end of FY '24. So there's, there's periods of time. We, we have applied for ESER one funds and we used a small portion. There was equitable services involved there, so, uh, we paid a few bills for abundant life for equitable service purposes, and we spent a little bit, uh, additional money on PPE. We have some money left in ESER one. ESER two and ESER three, we have not applied for yet. And we, as a district, leadership- leadership team, are kind of working together to utilize those funds as best we can for, for both, um, well, school reopening, but SEL purposes, as well as learning loss and so forth. ESR 3 is a little different animal, there's a little bit more work involved in that one, and that's, uh, we have to, uh, one of the things we have to do is update on our website, the reopening plan that we have already, but we just have to update that and make sure it's on our website. We also have to do community outreach, how best to spend those funds and so forth, and I think, um, the superintendent will talk about that in a bit. And there's an implementation plan. Well, the grant application is actually the implementation plan, so a lot of, uh, discussion and planning out needs to occur, so we can utilize the funds from all three of those grants, if you will, to serve purposes for SEL, learning loss, and so forth. And as I mentioned, ESR 2, we can actually spend it through the end of FY23, so June of '23. In ESR 3, we can spend through June of '24. So there, there's, there's kind of a planning phase here and how to best to use it. As an example, uh, as we hire the SEL, uh, people, they'll be charged to one of the grants. When we, uh, the summer school and the learning academy that we're doing this summer will be charged to the grants. We mentioned Panorama, uh, and so forth. So, uh, we're just in the process of planning all this out, and then we can, uh, once we apply for ESR 2, which we have to by the end of July of this, July of '21, and then ESR 3 by October 4th of '21. So we have some time on ESR 3, and actually, DESI has, uh, retold districts that you probably need to wait till closer to that time to, to apply, because you need to have the outreach and so forth, uh, to the community. So we'll be kind of working on all three of those and putting a plan together, um, on how best to spend those funds for our students' benefits. And Glenn, if you want to add or any questions?
Um, and, yeah, and thank you, Paul, uh, for that overview. It, it really was, uh, we understand that there's, uh, lots of discussion around the ESR grants that are out there, and so this was really an effort to try and just bring some focus to, uh, what they are, where, where we are at, what our fund level is, is looking like, and, and really to signal that, uh, as part of that ESR 3, there will be, um, certainly our efforts to comply with the outreach and, and helping formulate a plan. Um, and, uh, and so we'll, we'll be working at that and anticipate that, you know, over the course of the summer, we'll, uh, start to put into place the outreach effort plans for ESR 3, bringing to you as a committee what we're, as a leadership team, envisioning, obviously prior to, before we're actually going to submit that.
Mrs. Burns?
Um, just a quick question. How is, um, ESSR funds determined? Is it by size of district, or, I wasn't sure how, um, they were, that money was being, um, like factored to determine how, how much you, I, I'm sure I read it somewhere, but I can't recall.
I think a lot of it's based on Title 1.
I'm sorry?
Title 1 formula, I believe.
I, oh, I see. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I mean, you know, for, for ESR 3, it ranges from $100 million to, uh, you know, a few hundred thousand. So, I know, and, and, uh, my wife works in Glendale, it almost $42 million they received in ESR 3 funding, so, um, you know, it varies by, by district, obviously, but, and it's a, it's allocated to each district, so it's.
Very good. I just wasn't sure what the, how they factored the amounts. Thank you.
Mr. Rexton?
The ESR 3 process, this seems reminiscent of, um, Student Opportunity Act, um, in which we have the same, there's a formality to it of gathering stakeholder feedback and having, you know, a concrete plan and measurement and so forth. Is, is that a fair analogy?
It's a, it's an excellent analogy, yes. Yep.
Um, Mr. Righer, when you said we had to revise our reopening plan, does that mean the reopening plan for this coming fall?
No, actually, part of this grant is, is the reopening plan that I, that we did for DESI back a few months ago, we had a kind of three plans, if you will, but the in-person plan. So you have to update the in-person plan
Oh, I see.
with current guidelines, if you will, and, and so forth. And then, a part of this grant also, you have to look at it, I think, every six months and update that plan. I believe you have to revisit it anyway. Uh, but it, it's the plan that was originally, it's really the plan for in, fully in-person learning.
Great, thank you so much. Other questions or comments? All right. Um, item nine, other reports. Anyone have any subcommittee reports? Mrs. Plowman, you did attend another WEF?
I did.
Or anything to share?
Um, no real new updates. There is, um, there are a couple of longtime members who are going to be leaving, um, the WEF Board, and so there was a lot of discussion about that and the need for, um, the need for people who are interested in joining the Board, um, to really come forward and to reach out to Leslie Quick. Um, and if you go on to the WEF website, there's information there. So if people have interest in learning more about WEF and potentially becoming part of the Board, um, you would have to be voted in to the Board in order to, um, to be able to vote on things that the WEF is approving. Um, but people can also just attend a meeting and just get a feel for it and, and see and observe and, and understand all of the important work that WEF does. Um, so, um, they're going to reorganize their officers, um, but they're going to wait and do that in September, so, but no, other than that, no real big updates from WEF.
Thank you so much. Other subcommittee reports?
Uh, just real quick, there's a C-TO meeting tomorrow night, um, via Google Meet, um, at 6:30. And I know an email just went out from Student Support Services.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Rexton?
Uh, just tacking on quickly to Mrs. Plowman's report that the, uh, website she referenced is WilmingtonEdFoundation.org, for anyone who'd like to go look.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, I think that's it. Um, item 10, correspondence?
None this evening.
Item 11, future school committee dates. We have June 21st and other notable agenda items. Sorry, June 21st is the last day of school, it's an early release day. June 23rd is our regular session meeting here in this room. July 28th and August 25th are the dates we chose for the summer. And then I'll just, um, put a plug in for the middle school assistant principal forum is tomorrow at? Thank you, 3:15. So if you are a middle school parent, caregiver, or heading to the middle school, um, we would encourage you to attend. Mr. Smaha?
Sorry, is that, uh, is that a in-person event? It's a virtual?
It's, it's virtual.
It's virtual.
So how would, how would, how would somebody who's interested find, is there a link?
There was an email that was sent out, and the Zoom link is in the email. I think if you, like, people love Facebook, it's on Facebook too.
Sure, it's on Facebook. Um, I don't, did everyone receive it in the district? Or would it have just gone to?
It was sent to the middle school, as well as the current fifth grade, uh, families.
Okay, perfect.
Oh.
And I was sent out yesterday.
I know, I did get it, but I wasn't sure it was because I have a child at the middle school, so, then it was. Mrs. Burns?
Forgive me, thank you, I'm so sorry. Um, just quickly, um, you may have received it, and if not, it's probably waiting at the mailbox at the Roman House for School Committee. MAS C and MAS S are having their joint conference registration for both the conference and hotel reservations, uh, are open, so I just highly encourage there's a benefit to registering early, um, financially.
Significant benefit, like?
Excuse me?
A significant benefit, like $125.
Yes, it is. It will be done hybrid, so it is an in-person, um, conference in Hyannis, although there will also be a hybrid piece where people can, um, register and zoom into certain workshops that, that they're interested in. And I just wanted to, um, encourage anybody who might, or consider, um, attending to, you know, think about it and, um, proceed and register, so.
Excellent, thank you for that reminder.
And that's something that the district will also cover the cost of.
Yes, that's, that's, yes, it's School Committee Professional Development, at the, which is very informative and, uh, um, it really is, uh, beneficial, um, especially listening to other districts and what they are going through, it's, um, it really is quite beneficial as to how we approach things with our district.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, um, do you have anything else? Okay, I guess just a final congratulations to the class of 2021. They've been enjoying their week. And if there's nothing further, just a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Plowman, is there a second? Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you and good night. Congratulations to our retirees.